We will start with Shawn Kelly and we're moving number three up to number one. So medical and parental leave policy.
Geez, you threw a curveball.
Oh, I did. Stacy told me to do that.
Oh.
Stacy told you.
Stacy said it.
Stacy said it.
Thanks, Stacy.
I hear Stacy ended it, but sorry.
Okay, so you have a copy of this. I will tell you, this is state law. So the state legislature has made a new law concerning maternity, paternity leave. And I'm gonna give you just a quick little overview of what this policy will enact. I want to, I wanted to do this now. The law takes effect July 1st. But I want our employees who this might affect, have the summer, to kind of know what to expect because it's a big deal for them. So there's two different categories. If you have a child and you're a female, you get postpartum. If that baby is born in the school academic year, you would get three weeks for that. If it's born in the summer, you would not get that three weeks of postpartum. So in the, in the academic year, if a female were to have a child, they get three weeks postpartum paid as part of law. Then they would get an additional three more weeks called childcare that is used for that. It has to be three consecutive weeks per postpartum. However, the childcare they could use at a later date, as long as six months from the birth of a child. If you are a male and your wife, significant other, legally spouse has a child, in the academic year, you would get three weeks of childcare. You have up to six months to use that. If the child is born, you can say, hey, you know what, I'm gonna wait for the summer to get over and when school starts, I will come back and I will use my three weeks. It has to be consecutive. They can't take intermittent days. So a female can get six weeks of paid, a male can get three. A female would get three if the child was born in the summer. Then we've combined the two with the FMLA policy, which was the old 12 weeks of unpaid leave that's a federal statute. Now they would get six weeks of unpaid. They could get paid if they have enough sick days for a female. And then a man could follow under the same jurisdiction on the other six weeks. So that's the policy in short. Again, this takes effect July 1st. I think it's, as you remember, board, last year we did this preemptive and said, hey, we're gonna give our teachers a three weeks postpartum. And we probably had 10 employees that took advantage of, well, probably more than that when we added the males. It was more like 20 that did it this year. But now July 1st, it becomes state statute. We have to follow this. And I think it, it helps. It's been a big boon for our employees. So any questions? Anything I didn't cover? Is that clear to you? Anything I can add?
When you asked the, or when you said the male gets six more weeks with FMLA, do they get nine weeks because of the three weeks of childcare plus nine weeks to equal 12 total for FMLA?
So they would get 12 weeks in the care of a child. Three of those weeks become paid.
Paid. And the remaining nine could be paid if they had enough sick days.
Sick days.
Okay.
Remind me how many sick days they get a year?
They get 10 a year.
Can they accumulate them?
To 130. That's the ceiling that we have is 130. And the ceiling is to bridge us between long-term and short-term disability if that were to happen.
I just, I think this is amazing because I, I knew teachers that couldn't afford to stay home after six weeks. And so they came back after six weeks of unpaid leave. So to give them six weeks paid, I think is awesome. I just wanna point out that philosophy and purpose where it talks about Wasatch County School District is committed to fostering a supportive compassionate work environment. I mean, we're behind teachers. We're behind families. And I just, I love that we did this this year and, and allowed people to have that benefit even before it became state law. That's awesome.
It was a big, big thing.
Yeah.
So I don't deny, I think this is on the consent or there's an action item for this. We probably don't need to put this out for 30 days. That's up to your discretion. Because this is state statute, there's not a lot of leeway. If it's possible, if we could pass this tonight, that would be my recommendation. Because then our, our employees would know what the guidelines are. But if you're like, hey, we wanna have this out, there's not really a lot of change we can make because it's state statute and has followed that pretty well line by line.
So it's an option to put it out for 30 days?
It is. Everything's always out.
Everybody's in grand opinions on that. Have you gotten any feedback ever on the FMLA or parental leave or?
Not, no. I mean, on the three weeks that we've done before, there's been some questions. But people are so grateful that it hasn't had an issue. Now this, they know that it's state statute and they know that now they're getting even more. I haven't had any discussion yet. I met with the union about it. We talked about it. They're thrilled with it. I don't, I don't know if we would have any pushback. I mean, even if they did, there's not really anything we can change because it's state statutes.
Any other questions? Um, does anyone need copies or do you, are you, do you have the policies on your board? Does anyone need a printout of any of the policies? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shawn.
Okay, so we'll go to focus graduation policy. Dr. Campbell.
Hey. Can I bring up?
Yeah, let me move right here so you can sit right by you. Just don't take my dad coat.
That's why she wanted to sit there. Claude, appreciate you coming to this because she's the one that did the heavy lifting with, with this policy and has worked with the state. And now, actually, this policy we're proposing, I think, is now a model policy for the rest of the state. This is a new development in the state which is allowing kids to have another pathway to, to graduation. Really, and as you can see in here, it is aligned with some new code and rules with the state. But really, the purpose of this is to allow kids with very specific needs to be able to graduate that otherwise would not be able to graduate with their peers. As you can look through here, the very strict guidelines that are set by the state in the code and the rules that allow basically a senior that is significantly deficient in credits to be able to earn those credits through taking the GED course for their core classes. You can see in section 10D what those core credits that they could, oh, sorry, hold on. Just 10A, those credits that they could earn based on their deficiencies. So they wouldn't necessarily get all those credits just based on the deficiencies that they have if they passed the GED. Students need to have a reading level at least of a freshman level that is done through a state test or through a lexile test or national test. And basically, that would then allow them to work through our, and this is very specific to those students that enrolled in the alt school, alternative school program. And it would also need to be approved by a committee, as you can see in there, which is set up myself, a principal or representatives from each of the high schools, those are the only two, and then the alternative school. Again, we don't wanna create a kind of a, a huge pathway for kids to say, hey, I don't have to pay attention in class. I can go. But very specifically, we're targeting those kids that have had, in particular, either medical issues or mental health issues or other home and health issues that have stopped them from being able to get those credits that freshman and sophomore year. But once they get to us in that junior and senior year, there's more than just credits that we're looking at for graduation. Also looking for those opportunities to build the kids' new skills as it relates to job skills, social skills, those type of things. And maybe, Tara, you could maybe give a talk about some more specifics with kids that would benefit from this type of policy.
So the spirit of this policy when talking to the state is that we keep kids in high school. So these kids, typically the kids that are on this, that this would benefit, will pass the GED without question. They could go take the GED, pass the GED, move on to college. But what we're seeing is those kids actually lack some of the soft skills of being able to interact with their peers in a positive way, being able to see through challenges. They need a little help with goal setting and making sure that they know how to persevere when things get difficult. So what we would like to do is, we know that they could pass the GED. For example, I have one right now that could pass the GED, could have passed in January, but she needs the time with her peers because social anxiety is a real thing for her. And so the things that we're working on with her will benefit her, benefit her post-high school dreams. And we're working on building those skills that will aid her in, in having success down the road. It's not, these kids are not kids that we would push to be able to have the skills to pass the GED. We're saying that they're pretty much already have those skills that we can be pretty confident that they'll pass that. But we need to spend a little more time and we'd like to keep them a little bit longer so that we can work on the other things. I have a junior for next year. So I do have, I have a student that would really like this opportunity. They're working really hard in, in finishing up some of the credits that they need. And there's a chance that they won't make it. And if they don't, we do have a plan for them. But what they benefited from school was family, a support system, a place to go when they did feel well enough to come to school. So it's kind of the family unit. It's the other side of education, the skills that we built that maybe we don't, don't measure on a test every day, but that hopefully make them happy and well-adjusted to school. And their peers benefit from having access to them as well. So we do have a couple of kids next year that are maybe neurodivergent, it would be the appropriate word, and the skills that they're working on are flexible mindset, working with peers, incredibly intelligent. But the skills that they need over the next year or so are going to be focused on trying out some career pathways, working in our CTE programs to find interest so that we can help them channel their future too. So I would just say that the spirit of this is not to replace education. It's to actually maximize their time with us.
Any specific questions that you had with this policy? This is one that we do have on as an action item today, a lot because it could benefit one of the students that Tara's been working with over the last little while. And again, this is something that just, a new change that came out of the state of the centers.
Does this allow the student to walk at graduation?
With what?
With alt, with the alt school, with the main campus?
The way this is written, depending on the number of credits that they receive.
Oh, that's right.
Because that's currently what we allow students to do.
That's right.
So we would just maintain that. That's policy.
And if they've earned some credits in those core classes, we would fill in the missing pieces, not shift the credits. We would just fill in the missing pieces because those additional credits are skill-based, right? There are opportunities to explore the arts or to explore career pathways. We, that's the purpose. So we wouldn't shift things around that.
Thanks, Tara.
That's awesome. I think in regards to walking and graduation, I think over the years, we've become a little more lenient on letting kids walk. And we've got some of these, we still have some pranders that we go by. We found, interestingly enough, that in recent years, some kids choose to participate in both graduations, the alt school graduation and the regular graduation. And I think we're kind of over some of the old traditional fears of, you know, if we let too many kids walk at graduation, it's gonna go over the bar for everyone. And I think there's kind of a new understanding that that's really not in play. And so I, I think it's moved in a positive direction. I think it's, it's good for, for all kids. And, and the alt school graduation has become its own, you know, it's kind of become its own thing that is really super positive. Those kids look, really look forward to it. And yeah, we appreciate, we appreciate what Tara's doing over there. She has some, kind of a specific background that helped her in this space. And this has been a real, real positive move for her. And she's, she's doing a great job.
Tara, do you wanna just take a minute and just summarize what you do at the alt school? Just kind of give board members a brief, especially the newer ones.
Yeah, so my role is awesome. I get to do a lot of different things. So primarily, I'm stationed at the alternative school where I get to help kids that have struggled in the main campus setting to recover credits, get back on track. We've made a big move this year with the addition of coach bringers to the work-based learning role. And job placement has become a really big priority in career exploration in post-secondary. So this year, we had six students get on track. The messaging that we give kids is, let us help you get started with your post-secondary before you leave. A lot of our students maybe are lower socioeconomic status. And so if we can get them enrolled in a technical school prior to leaving high school, they don't have to pay tuition while they're enrolled with us. So we had six of our seniors graduate. They finished their credits at our campus and went to M-Tech in January so that they could get support. If they start to struggle in their classes, they come home and we help them get on track with that and make sure that they continue down their pathway. It's a big push for our students to get enrolled and start their post-secondary before they leave. And we're getting more and more students interested in that pathway that, that know that we can support them even from main campus that are coming because we have some of those connections now. So our alternative program serves juniors, or sorry, sophomores through seniors. We took 28 sophomores this year. That's been a really fun experience to kind of figure out how to best support them and help them build better habits. So we work on that program during the day. I have an adult education program from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday nights at the high school, where students that are either 16 through 18 that have withdrawn from high school or they didn't complete high school within their graduation window, they come and work with our adult education teachers to get their high school diploma.
How many people come to that?
Or GED. It depends. Right now, we offer English language learner classes there as well. And we've had three GEDs, so we had two Spanish-speaking, or sorry, Spanish GEDs pass this year. So we'll do a graduation, June 5th, for our adult education graduates. We've had a few earn their high school diplomas. We have another one that started this year and it's been, he's the coolest kid ever, so I hope that you guys can come to his graduation. He's 19, came from another district, is living with grandparents. And he has recovered about 15 credits. He spends all day, every day on his schooling and he's so proud to be able to finish his high school diploma at 20. So we try to connect them to those pathways. Our adult education team is incredible. They took him on a field trip to Job Corps just on their own. They're like, can we volunteer to please take the student? So they, they help our people find pathways that way. We have strong connections with workforce services who helps us get our students tied to pre-employment services and even job shadowing and internships. So that's all of our students, even into the adult education range, they get those opportunities through IOA and pre-employment services. So they come into our school on Mondays and work with our students and then we connect them to the adult education students as needed and as we can get them connected. There's programs, IOA is one that is, do workforce services that will help pay students to do post-high school things. They'll help pay for tuition to technical schools and for tutoring for students that are on IEPs or have low SES or are in learning languages. There's a lot of factors that allow them access to additional wraparound services after they leave us. They even give them $500 if they grad, when they graduate, if they're enrolled in this program. So Mondays, we have a ton of connections. We had about 10 parents and kids in there today working with Volcare. So that's kind of, we provide a lot of wraparound resources there. And then we also run the program at the jail where we provide educational services at the jail for inmates that are seeking high school diplomas. And funny enough, every now and then, one of our main campus kids is 18 and makes a mistake. But they know they can find us through the school and the jail. So they've actually gone there and had the teacher in the jail call me and say, hey, I'm gonna need some help. What should I work on while I'm here? So just all kinds of different things. And then we also partner with the transition college for our adult learners with disabilities that we serve until they're 22. And so they have a program that offers job skills and life skills and, yeah. So that's kind of the.
Graduation's coming up and board members are invited. Brienne was invited to speak at the graduation, so she'll be the speaker. But all board members are invited to come and we'll be up on stage helping pass off the diplomas. It's really fun. It's a good experience.
What's the trigger? You said sophomores through seniors. So how, how far behind do they have to be on credits? Or I guess what makes a student transition from main campus to alternative schools a sophomore or junior?
So there's a process. And I don't know how much has been talked about, but are you aware of the connect factor? So there's some things, some indicators that a student's struggling. One of them can be attendance. Oftentimes, attendance is the last symptom of a struggle, but it's the easiest for us to catch. Grades and behavior referrals. So as kids accumulate things that show us that there's a struggle, if they, the systems at the main campus, we enroll them in an intervention. Let's say they, they have an attendance tracker and we give them a coach and that isn't working, then at the point where we feel like we've exhausted the resources at main campus, they'll refer them to us. And so then we build individual plans for every single student. They fill out a graduation pathway, a grad plan with, they, each student has a mentor and they have their own plan towards graduation. They set their goals. We work with their trainers to get them work-based learning experience. And then all of our field trips and excursions are tied to their interests. So we take them out to, we have several students that are interested in psychology. So we went and met with UVU's chair of the psychology department and spent the day with them. And our kids are so excited about their future. So all of the things that we do, we try to tie to their future plans. Yeah, but yes, they get referred through the counseling team and the admin teams at the high school. And sometimes they choose to refer themselves and then we meet together as a team and decide the best.
I just have one question on language, section 10 credits. It says, a school may award core credit to an FGP student for passing GED exam up to four credits. So two questions. One, is it you may? Because may is like.
Yeah.
You will award it. And then is it up to four credits or is it four credits? Like if they pass?
It's up to, and that's, that's kind of why we wrote it that way. So if a kid's only deficient for two, we're not gonna give him extra credits and then he doesn't have to do the other ones to be able to graduate. So we will do up to, but it can't be more than what's listed here.
Okay.
And that's wording that came directly from the state.
Okay.
Another quick question.
Lots of things. Thank you.
Good things. Good things. I would invite any of you to come and see us. We have the coolest kids around and the best teachers. I know everybody said that, but I'm telling you.
Thanks, Tara.
If I could say, whenever I hear Tara and her team talk about all they're doing, you remember that old poem about the one per, the one child that was throwing the starfish in and they said, why are you doing that? And like, well, it matters to that one? Well, Tara and her team brought in bulldozers and everything else to get all those starfishes back into the sea.
And they end up saving us just, you know. They teach us more about ourselves than we'll ever know about them.
I have a special place for alt school in my heart and I will tell you that they do save you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, travel policy.
Yeah. Look, water.
Nothing.
Okay, the district policy. This is one that we have not updated for a long time. And really, the purpose for this one is, the last time that we've updated the per diem expenses was, I'm not sure exactly. I could look back, but I think it's been almost a decade and a half, if not more. And so it was becoming more, it was becoming difficult for schools and for the district to send teachers to training and those type things and allow them to, you know, basically to pay for their, you know, those type things. So that was kind of a large impetus of it. And then some are worrying, we've just kind of changed more towards the model policies that we saw, certainly covering all the things that we, we have before. But I would say that the main differences in this are really just along the lines of how we're doing per diem. And then this policy, we're proposing to do it through just the federal per diem rates which then allow for very specific regions and areas and for teachers to be able to be reimbursed based on the areas that they're going to. Our past policy only listed five cities as different than the rest of the per diem policy. Just now the way things, the economy, the way it's going, it's just not adequate to reimburse teachers what we're asking them to go and get the training that they, that they need and that we want and we need as a district. It's, I mean, changes that. Any specific questions?
We're gonna be clear on this one. When they do the per diem rate, the per diem is not for hotel. It is for incidentals.
It's for the, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Meals and incidents.
Yep.
Thank you.
Done. Great on time.
Okay, how the bullying policy, does anyone want a hard copy of that? We do have some copies of the, hard copies of this one if you'd like and you could pass those on. I know you also have anything. This is the, the one we brought before. And as the committee discussed, many options to this, I do kind of wanna preface that that we are not bringing this as an action item to the board as we discussed and based on the questions that we received the last time. I think that as we discussed this committee, this policy in and of itself, not everything falls under bullying the way we talk, right? As it relates to teacher conduct. And again, this is just referring to employee bullying. There has been a change in the state definitions of bullying. There's now staff bullying and student bullying. They've separated that, which I think facilitates us having the two separate policies, which was our proposal anyway. But, but really understanding the bullying policy in, in context of the employee conduct policy that was that the previous board kind of rewrote in December, that we still wanna bring to the board, plus quarterly termination, all those type things, this makes more sense in context of all those other ones. So having said that, this is still one that we're currently working on and wanted to get the feedback today based on the conversation that we had previously. So I can go through and just hit some highlights of things that we discussed as a, as a committee or maybe there's, it might be easier for, for board members to hit specific areas that that they had questions on or concerns or suggestions for.
So one of the questions I have, which seems, the, the two definitions seem to be conflicting for me.
Okay.
Which is B, it says with the intent to cause harm. And then when you go into one and two, it identifies it as that a reasonable person would find hostile. The intent to cause harm and the reasonable person seem to be conflicting to me.
Okay.
Because if a reasonable person infers that this is causing them harm and the, the staff member didn't intend it or says they didn't intend it, like what defines intent?
Okay.
And I don't know that intent is defined anywhere to make that clear that, you know, what, what defines that?
Yeah. No, great question. Again, these definitions come directly from the state statute. And so we've really just incorporated those into this. So, so along those lines, but I, what are some, maybe some specifics that are maybe some changes in this that you would, that you've maybe seen in other places or would like to see as it relates to intent? And again, I, I would say with a lot of investigations we do, intent is probably the hardest thing to, yeah, yeah. Quantifying those type things. So it's just, yeah, so I, I appreciate that comment. I'm...
It's one of the challenges with the state statute as it exists today.
Yeah, for sure.
That it creates an issue that essentially requires a dedication in front of a jury or a judge to define it. And today, that's not a great policy for a school district, in my opinion. So from, from that perspective, and it, and it does talk about it a little bit here already, which is the idea that says, if someone does it once and you warn them, if you, if, if someone, whether it be a student or a teacher, does something once, you warn them and you say, not appropriate. They do it again. That, that crosses a threshold that says, you have now crossed into a threshold. You were told it wasn't appropriate. You did it again.
That seems like intent.
That seems like intent.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that, something like that needs to be defined that says, you know, there's, there's kind of a, a set of rules or guidelines that say, if, if you are warned or if there is a process that identifies... That says, you know, there's, there's kind of a set of rules or guidelines that say, if, if you are warned or if there is a process that identifies this and someone has reported it and it has been brought, you may not have intended it that way. However, when it comes to bullying, it's often how the receiver receives it. And you may not know how the receiver receives it. But once you do know, then it changes that.
Okay, great point. So what I'm hearing is maybe some...
Maybe some instances where intent would be...
So do you define intent as saying that?
We would, we would consider intent?
Yeah, so I, yeah, I kind of see, based on that, maybe some examples of how we might establish intent is maybe what I'm hearing there. But I, I would, I guess the question that arises in my mind is, by putting maybe some examples in there, that still allows us to say, oh, we didn't think about that one, but that's clearly intent. So it doesn't bind us to not moving forward with this policy if it was in fact bullying. And certainly, and that was kind of my point before too, that is that some things reach a level that it's not really, not everything bullying. Some of it is just inappropriate behavior and that's where those other policies would take over. So maybe a combination, we would feel more comfortable about this policy when we know that there's these others that are encapsulating maybe some of these other issues. But I suppose your point with, with the intent to cause harm is the most difficult part for us to establish. But I would worry about us creating too stringent guidelines that doesn't allow us to move forward and protect students and staff if we're not just maybe offering options for that and so maybe some general guidance for principals that are doing the investigation or for the district. I don't know if that...
I mean, if you, yeah, if you could give an illustrative example of, this is, here is an example of what this is. You know, and maybe it's as simple as when, you know, you did, you did something. You were told the student didn't like it. Yes, you don't think it's bullying, you know, but unfortunately, that's, that's a hard, that's a hard line for people. Because the circumstances that someone, that someone has, a student may have in their own situation, oftentimes, I mean, I could tease you, but if you, if you are in an abusive home, that teasing could be, you could view that as, "I'm bullying you," because that's their life circumstance, right? And so it's how do we, how do we protect those that are most vulnerable or susceptible to bullying? Is, is what my focus or intent on this is, is that sometimes we don't realize how it affects a student. And we should allow a way for a student to feel safe to express that. To say, "You made me feel this way." You know, we validate the feelings. Yes, we understand you feel this way. We can take instructive action to, or corrective action, or to help the teacher understand or to support the staff member or the band. This is just something that, the way it was done, you didn't mean ill-intent or mal-intent or however you want to call that. However, this is, this is how it's affecting this child. Yeah. Okay?
Is that something Eric, you can explore a little?
Yeah, you're not making it easy, but if you could find some wording in there that'll allow us to maybe explore that.
I like the idea of making sure there's some due process in there, that somebody was told, okay, this is not appropriate, that this person has asked this behavior to stop. If we can tie that into, make sure that that's clearly written, then maybe there's, there's an alternative language here. Protects the other person too, in that example. Because again, they're framing, has no, not in the idea.
So maybe some examples?
Yeah, sorry, as it relates to maybe teasing or horseplay, that would help us to see. Yeah, kind of, so maybe the due process part of that.
Okay. Yeah, and part of it is because in three, as an example, ordinary teasing, horseplay, argument for peer conflict. I mean, one staff member is horseplaying, I don't know that I would, maybe not the most appropriate intent. But, you know, again, if, it can shift to that level if it's being taken down a bit. The other interesting thing, and I know it's coming from statute, is for me, what's interesting is in E, hazing, the hazing section, it only has to meet one of those definitions to be hazing. Which is interesting that the hazing definition is more broad and covers more items than bullying. So someone could be, we may not consider it bullying, however, it could fall into the hazing definition.
I think one thing to point out, because I struggled with this, as we met with the attorney to go over this process, I was like, well, this could be wrong or this could be wrong. And she kept saying that, but it's not, it's inappropriate and it's wrong, but it would fall under code of conduct and not bullying. So that was helpful to me to be like, okay, this needs to fit under code of conduct because there's still things that are inappropriate that would require correction. But, but she said, "This is bullying and bullying only, and hazing, hazing only, and those other things will be covered in the huge code of conduct policy that this will fit under."
Yeah, which is why we're waiting on this and we'll present the other ones all together.
But you're right, it is, they're different definitions and it was hard to wrap my brain around it because bullying is...
The other thing that helped me in looking this as we went through it is, it is real, I know that it's defining three separate words, but the policy covers all these things inclusive, right? So whatever you want to call it, if it hits one of these things, we're going to deal with it the exact same way. So I think whether this was their intent or not, it was saying, all right, whatever word you're using, these behaviors need to be dealt with in this matter of policy. And so whether you use cyberbullying, hazing or bullying interchangeably, whatever it is, that these behaviors are what's covered and how to treat them. Is that helping kind of conceptual, or am I getting stuck on the definition? Or am I making sure that these behaviors are covered?
Because she, the attorney differentiated abuse, that abusive behaviors weren't necessarily covered in here because that would be under the code of conduct. And so that was, it was almost like splitting hairs, but there is a difference, she said, and that's why...
Other specific areas and maybe I'll just hit. For time, just a couple of highlights that we as a committee discussed. So one of the other areas is, that came up last time, is this idea of an office. That came up and how that was addressed in this is, if you look at six, the investigation is whether it is anonymous or not, it will be investigated. The only thing, there was some question about, well, if it's an anonymous tip, then can you move forward with any consequences for the teacher? But really, the way that was written, it says, if it's only anonymous. So even after that tip, we did an investigation, if we have nothing else other than that tip, we would not move forward with any consequences at that point, but certainly it would be investigated. And if anything was found in that investigation, we would act on that. So that was one of the things that we discussed at length with that too. And I know that was a question from the last time. Also, the other highlight in here, I think, was the last one, it had the training happening every three years where we've now changed that wording to annually, that this training will happen. Not just teachers, but also coaches and volunteers and students.
And how long is the training?
It's quite substantial as you're going through it. Obviously, the coach's training would have more to it than maybe the students would have. And again, related to this staff bullying policy, what we're telling students is, kind of what you referred to earlier Brad, is these things are not okay to happen to you, right? From a, or other. And so that would be, it really depends on who your audience is, so we didn't necessarily specify.
So as part of, and I don't know the process at the beginning of the school year, but at the beginning of the school year, I'm assuming most of the training will probably occur during in-service or something at the beginning of the school year. And when that occurs, I mean, is there, is there like an attendance or something that?
Yeah.
You make sure everybody actually gets it, they go through, they sign off on it, they, or whatever is.
Yeah.
So somebody six months down the road goes, "Well, I didn't attend a training," or?
Yeah, in this, the teachers will sign off that they received that training.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
And do you decide?
Do you talk about the code of conduct?
No.
No, this would include, code of conduct does also, but this would also, yeah, any of the bullying type things that we would also do annually. They would, there would be a...
Was it training, or?
Oh, there it is. It's under ten.
Yeah, so that's the other thing we talked about as it relates to training. We said that it would be up to the principal to do that because as you can see, there's a lot here. And we're not limiting a school to saying, with all your other 50 trains you're trying to get done in those couple of days before school starts, get this one done. There are, especially based on, would we train the same way with examples and stuff in elementary schools you would for high school, especially with the training that Sean was doing with coaches? Now those, those examples would be obviously different, more nuanced and more to it, you know? So we really are giving the power to principals to do exactly what their, what their staff needs. And we're not saying do it in one shot, because I don't, that's not good learning either. Like, we're leaving up the principals to do what they feel is best based on the time that they have allotted, not only at the beginning of the year, but throughout the year with their staff.
Brad, under Training and Education, page seven, it's D for, the last sentence on the top of page nine says, "The school shall obtain and keep signature lists of participants in the activity training." But your question, because that's only for volunteer coaches, employees and students involved in any curricular athletic program. So are you asking up above, do we need to add that signature list to the school employee training, you're saying?
Ten B on the next page down actually covers it. Each employee shall provide a signed statement stating the employee has received a copy of this policy.
So then, okay.
Yes.
I do want to point out too, because another thing we talked about last time was a grievance procedure. What if, what if you didn't feel like it was handled? So that was added on page 10. We tagged the, that's a separate policy, but it's tagged so that way someone knows, hey, there, I do have recourse if I feel like I didn't get it, have a pride in it.
Any other specific concerns or ones that, last time, I think we addressed most of the major ones that came up with this? Again, this is not going to an action item tonight, but certainly we want to hit this one as clean as possible before we introduce the other ones to, to bring forth altogether.
If you have any other thought, let us know when we can tomorrow. Maybe you'll have to let us know by tomorrow, but just...
But it wouldn't help.
It's continuing qualification.
Oh, I did, sorry. It just came up in another conversation. Was the word promptly, is that spelled lined out in here?
Yes.
Promptly, okay.
Yeah, and we did, and we did talk about that one. I don't know, yeah. As we talked about it, another thing is because of the different nature of some of these things and getting information in, we felt as a committee talking about using the word promptly, best encapsulates what, what schools and the districts are at, especially as it relates to different information coming in. We don't, it would be nice if every kid had that body cam on. They don't see this, but anybody that can see everything that happened. Well, yeah, but those are by choice and sometimes we don't see what we want to see. And if the things we want to see were raised, very good. But in those situations, by using the word promptly, we feel that it's giving that guidance to principals that as soon as you have something, you need to act on it. We don't wait till we have everything, you need to act on it. But nor do you want to act too rashly for having some information to be able to move forward in a way that would make sense with this policy.
Promptly referring to starting the process?
That's right.
Not having to force finishing.
Exactly, yeah.
Not a couple of months.
Right.
Some definition.
Yeah. No, the only one I was going to add is, in our investigation training, which is also mentioned in this policy, that principals would receive training on this policy and how they investigate and follow up. In that training, we talked about how the need to jump on that information quickly so you don't lose some of that evidence that will allow you to make the best decision in the process.
Very good.
But we also talked about not tying anyone's hands, because Director Campbell had a great example. He's like, "I'm in the middle of an investigation where I can't get anyone to call me back. So if I was supposed to have it done in two weeks, I'm in violation of policy because nobody's..."
Definitely more around the start.
Yeah, so try to, yeah, open.
Being held accountable, yeah, because then you force it and do it wrong.
Right.
But on the flip side of that, you don't want to take too long either.
Absolutely.
That's addressed in our, in that training on how to do a productive investigation. You jump on the information quickly so you don't lose that evidence, but yet you make sure that you're exhausted of not being gathering that evidence that we're making the best decision possible out of the circumstances.
And maybe it's somewhere else, did I miss, does it talk about if an incident is verified or part of the action plan that gets reported to U-PAC if necessary, if they are, if that is part of the requirement?
Yeah, so in here it refers to the orderly termination. We did not use the, and it also talks about disciplinary action up to termination. We felt that's, that's where that's covered in, because that would be one of those things that we really couldn't, or specific in that, and had that as one of those, just saying up to termination. We could be specific with that, I think would be one way that we could address that. Maybe there's, I don't know if that's getting at what you're...
It's already law, anyway, you could, or rule, you could say it and reference that.
And reference that one?
And I'm not asking to solve it today. With other districts I've worked with, they have an ability, the hesitancy for people to report things with their name is fear of retaliation oftentimes is what carries that, that way. Other districts that I've worked in with, most of them have been larger, have used third-party services to allow reporting with a name, but the district doesn't actually know who they are. So that retaliation becomes almost impossible unless it, unless you get to a point where it's coordinated or something that requires that you disclose who they are. But they have chosen methodologies and processes to allow, you know, reporting through a website and things like that, where they can still make reports without a particular, you know, individual on the campus or things like that. It's, and I bring that up because we are a, we are a big little district or a little big district, or however we want to call ourselves, that, you know, oftentimes it's somebody, you know, they go to church with, they live in the same neighborhood, they, you know, and it's hard. And, and so having an ability, not that you want disciplinary action against everybody, but having an ability to report, whether it's a method like that or some other methodology, I don't necessarily care, but it's finding a way to allow those things to be reported. Would we explicitly state if they do it anonymously, there is an action that can be taken against them?
I appreciate that. If I can show kind of what we've started using. And one of the things that we talked about as a committee is, and especially after all these policies are done, that we will have a landing page on our website that talks about those type of things where someone can do a reporting. And I'll show you kind of what we've already started using. Is this, Stacy, is this border panel, can I take over for just a minute?
No, I'm not. Do you have a border panel?
Do you have a border panel, okay. And so we have two options for parents that we've already started using. One is just this, where they go through and it's not required that they put their name in there.
This is on our website, right?
No, this is not, but it will be on the website once we have that page finished. And we're also working with Title IX with the new reg to make sure that we're in compliance with that one too. Make sure that all of it's on there for any discrimination and for any bullying and harassing. And that's kind of the name and it talks about discrimination or harassment, bullying notification. So we cover all of those. It allows us to know at least who's reporting and so we know what level they are. It would be first name, last name, and again, these are not required. So we put that in there, a contact email. in there, and contact email, again, is optional, phone number's optional, but it does, they get into what the incident is, and the date it occurred, any witnesses that we would need to go talk to, again, hopefully, the more information we have, the, the easier it is for us to get at. Do they feel if it was harassment, discrimination, bullying, or cyberbullying? These are things that we would need to look at, that while they're calling it bullying, it would actually fall under Title VI, or Title IX, those type things, and that information may help us. Again, that would be part of the investigation, when and where did it occur, any information they would have in addition to witnesses and those type things. Was this reported anywhere else? If yes, two, what actions or results would you like to see as a result of this complaint? Because sometimes, they want to be anonymous, they just want it to stop, and they don't want anything else to happen, and so, some of the ones that we deal with are, you take care of this quietly, but, and I don't necessarily want any consequences, but I want it to stop, like, this would be as far as, that we can get that information if they wanted to do it anonymously. And then, obviously, at the end, as, as the policy talks about, just kind of a reinforcement of, if you do report something falsely, that that is also not against policy. And then they submit this, this populates, comes in an email, and also populates an Excel sheet, that we were starting to keep records of all those incidents that come to the district, so we can see when they came in, and then what were the action steps that occurred.
And who's, and you said that, who specifically is this going to?
So, any complaint that comes to us, this is what we send to, to parents.
Who's us?
To the district.
When they pull that out, who gets it?
Oh, it comes to myself and Mary Berger, my assistant, and we will look through it, and then contact the schools if we know what school it is, and say, okay, how do we want to conduct this investigation based on the information I have?
Jake, did you have a question?
If you, could you put something on there, that like, where it says first, "Not required"?
Yeah, we could put that.
Specifically, saying you don't have to give us that information?
Yeah, we could. It was specific if you want, yeah, the name, I'm assuming is what you would want.
The name, for any of those spots, it would be identifying markers, you could indicate that it's not required.
And I, and again, that's an interesting thought about the elements using a third party, where we would have a name if it, if it did go to law enforcement, that's, I think, another level.
Can they still do Safe U-T anonymous?
Safe U-T is already being used, this would be in addition to Safe U-T, and that's where we get a lot of them already, bullying, harassment, suicide ideation, or even interpersonal conflict, or one of the ones that they get through Safe U-T.
And they, they withhold that information if they ask the other ones to report to them, so that is one option.
Anything about the Safe U-T here?
Oh, yes, I have, yeah.
And I had this question this week from a constituent, and talked to Director Campbell about it, so I'm just throwing it out there, because I thought it was helpful, is that general trends are being tracked and are being addressed, so that we can build capacity in administrators or with staff, so that way, if we're seeing a trend that's concerning, we can address it and, and do the training, so that it gets a positive experience, and that trend ends negatively. And I think that's a great change.
Another thing we have, and I can show, we also have a PDF form, if they do want to put that in there, it'd be more comfortable than the online form. They can do that, and then we will take this information, and this is, the bomb says email to myself, or Mary Berger, and then put this information into, into the Excel sheet, so again, we're tracking what's being done.
Very good, thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
A lot of, a lot of work is going with these policies, and I appreciate the very thorough discussion, and we want to make sure we can be as close to perfect as we can.
Can we tell them the next steps?
Yeah, so the next steps is the, the committee will work on the employee conduct is, is the next one on, on the Doc件, and then after that would be the student bullying one, and being able to bring all those together, and, and talking with HR as it relates to this orderly termination, to make sure that we're in line with all the other HR policies too.
If you wanted to pull that up on your own, it's 408, I just never memorized, and you can look at it and give us some, you know, and bring us feedback if you want. 408.
Yeah, I think, I don't know, thank you very much, appreciate, appreciate the committee, a lot of work.
Okay, we've got a few minutes left for roundtable. If there's anything that anybody wants to bring up or discuss, a minute.
I have a question, just a follow-up question. I met with the math, with the, about the math initiative, and you guys had mentioned Missouri and the metrics for connection, and developing, working on that data, is that something, that's, you're working with the alternative school to help those kids reconnect, that's awesome.
Yeah.
That's awesome, I wondered if that was the connection. And I don't, the rest of the board, I haven't had a chance to share with them, I, you could probably explain it better of what that is.
Yeah, so we had a chance to go out and visit a school in Missouri about things they were doing to help their kids be connected at school, and one of the things they had was, was a, they called it a concern factor, we call it connect factor, but essentially, it's an early warning system that helps us know that students are disconnecting from us, and that the relationships we have with them currently are not enough to serve them. And so, it's a, it's a, it's a notification to us that we need to get to that kid, establish a positive, healthy relationship based on the kid's goals, and try and support him more.
Awesome. It's awesome. I'll be in the jury, but it's not so cold.
Yeah, it's impressive.
Are you going to have anything else?
Ten.
Okay, we'll go ahead, and Jerry, we're in there, we are at 6:30.